One of them is a site coordinator for Fleming School. And in the description, it says during the school day, you will serve as a mainstream teaching assistant at the school four days a week from ten AM to two PM. So sixteen hours a week during the school year, it sounds like Essex Junction Municipal Taxes are supplementing Essex Westford School District Taxes. So is there a bill back for that where we're credited or something? Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the questions and the comment about the lights. We appreciate that. Anybody else? I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so we will move on to business item five A, which is interviews of many committees. And we did a bunch of interviews at the last meeting on the eleventh. So we did capital program review. So I, based on our our memo, it looks like Tara for a bike walk is the first person up. And I'm not sure is Tara in person online? It does say she was supposed to be online. That's who Dennis? Okay. All right, well, we will move on to Development Review Board where we're not going to interview candidates for that because neither of them are present. So then it would be the moderator position, which would be Zach. Is Zach either in the room or online? Not in the room. Wow, we're batting a thousand tonight, guys. Okay. Well, we'll just keep moving then and we'll come back and hopefully other, other folks will join us. So Planning Commission, Elijah Massey. Yay. Thanks for joining us. Good to see you. Sorry, Elijah, can I stop you for two seconds? I can't hear you at all.
Is this better if I'm closer to the mic?
If you're closer to the mic, yes, thank you. Sorry. So sorry to interrupt you. We do have your application, of course, and we know you've been on the, the Planning Commission. Is there anything that you want to add to your application that you didn't put on there?
I don't believe so. I'm happy to entertain any questions or clarifications about my statement of interest.
Counselors?
Nice to see you come back in.
Yeah, thank, thank you for asking to renew.
Yeah, certainly.
I agree, Elijah, but I will ask one question, just, you know, again, because you've been really great in, in providing a lot of feedback and really enjoyed your interactions on the Planning Commission and participate a bit, so thank you for that. But just thinking about some of the things that you have not just tackled, but the things that are moving ahead. Is there anything that we're missing that you think that we're not putting enough attention on in regards to the objectives the Planning Commission is looking at right now?
Not within kind of the stated constraints that the council and the city is aware of. I think, I guess, for the record, just to keep the subject present, although it is very present. The fact that the Planning Commission is so heavily involved in work that a housing commission could be or would be engaged in if we had the resources between additional funds for additional city staff and the ability to, I know that there's interest, as I'm sure all of you are aware, of from members of the city to serve on a commission. I don't know if we have enough for our quorum at this point. But I think that, given what the nation, the state, and including our municipality is dealing with in terms of housing, I think that that continues to be a priority and the Planning Commission is certainly fully engaged with that subject. But it at times does feel that we are necessarily acting as both a housing commission and a planning commission. And while those two subjects are intimately connected, you know, anything that we can do on any level as a community to increase the likelihood or future prospects for having a housing commission, now that we are separated from the town, independent of that, I think that that would be just in terms of, again, it's something that everyone is well aware of and I know that it I'm not kind of, there's no request there other than just to, to bring, to keep the subject in everyone's, the forefront of everyone's minds. I think in addition, there is also a priority, particularly for members of the Planning Commission, the possibility of having an energy commission. You know, that is something, again, an area where the Planning Commission can work. But given, especially as we've seen in the last couple of days, with a changing climate, you know, again, being in a state which has, you know, generally older housing stock, you know, opportunities to work on energy issues kind of in conjunction with the state's efforts, which again, is ongoing at the, at the state level. But any opportunity that there would be, you know, as a city to move towards an additional body, whether it be a commission or a task force, kind of taking on some of those subjects more, in a more targeted way. You know, could certainly keep the Planning Commission involved, but as the Planning Commission, you know, in the near future is going to take on updates to the, to the comprehensive plan. And while housing and energy will be a part of that, those would just be two areas where there maybe is an opportunity, if all of the stars align, you know, for increased community engagement around those subjects that currently the Planning Commission is, is engaged with at a necessity.
I appreciate that feedback a lot. I do have a follow-up, but I'm, I'm gonna hand it over to Link. She has a question.
Thank you. Elijah, based on your comments regarding Housing Commission and maybe also the Energy Committee, in your opinion, would it be a better setup to have a Housing Committee as a subcommittee of the Planning Commission or a separate standalone committee from the council level?
From my subjective point of view, it's a big enough subject and a challenging enough topic to merit the latter.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you asking a question because that's part of my follow-up, but I'll, I'll take it one step further from the standpoint of recognizing that housing, how important housing is. And I agree with you and we've got a more, we've got more discussion coming later in the agenda. But I, just a quick question for you around, do you think that housing, from the standpoint of the work that a Housing Committee would do or Housing Commission could do? Would that, do you think that committee should be a permanent committee? Or do you think it's possible that that committee could do something in, say, a year or two years, a shorter term with some focused effort that you can accomplish what we need to in order to move the ball forward?
Again, subjectively, I think that, given the scale of the issue and the challenges, I would imagine at least in, let's say, the next, like, near-term five to 10 years, there would be work for it. But if I could take kind of your suggestion of parsing the, I don't know, the temporal duration of it, I think potentially starting with a, a one to two-year effort, like going out for a one-to-two-year effort, seeing how it goes with the opportunity to extend it as needed, would certainly be a way to approach it. I would be surprised if you're gonna find that you, there isn't work to extend beyond that. But if, if in terms of bringing that to reality, if having it, the initial effort be bounded with a shorter timeframe, and that being a deciding factor, I would be all for that as a, as a, as a foot in the door.
I appreciate it. Again, thank you so much.
Elijah, do you have any questions for us?
I, not so much a question. I do just want to say specifically between the Housing Commission and Council, I have sincerely appreciated the recent opportunities that we have had to meet jointly and to receive presentations jointly. In my limited time, hoping to renew with the Planning Commission, there has been sincere effort or interest, I think, on both sides to have more of that dialogue. And so the fact that that has materialized in the last months has been really encouraging. And I think I can speak for my other commission members that we, as the commission, have really appreciated the council's effort and interest in engaging. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been, it's been talked about for a while now, so glad that we were finally able to do it and we're not done doing it. So. Everyone that's going to be interviewed tonight is gonna hear the same exact thing. We are going into executive session at the end of this meeting and do plan on making some decisions and staff will reach out. But if you have any questions or anything, feel free to reach out to us. You know where to find us. And thank you for coming again. Appreciate it. All right. Next, I have Sarah Shay. Well, okay, just double checking that I don't have anybody online. Bye. Well, we're moving on then. We're going to Rich and I know I can see Rich, so I know he's here.
I'm here.
Hey, Rich, thanks for joining us.
How you doing? And just at this moment, my dog decides to bark. Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, it's, it's all good. It's all good. All right, so, thank you for applying.
Absolutely.
We just, same questions that I asked Elijah. Is there anything on your application that you didn't write that you would like us to know?
I don't believe so. I mean, I would just say that, you know, I've been on the Tree Committee since 2013. I think it was one of the founding members along with Warren and Nick. And, you know, I'm just proud of the work that we've done. You know, it's exciting just to walk around the junction and see the tangible, you know, impacts that we've made.
It's great progress. Appreciate it. Counselors, any questions for Rich?
Jab, I'm very grateful that you're stepping up yet again, Rich.
I'll just reiterate exactly the same. The one thing I will ask is I, I do like asking this question of people who are currently on the committees. Is there any feedback that you, you want to share with us in ways that we can help support or improve the efforts that the Tree Committee is doing?
No, I mean, I, I really feel the council has been very supportive of our work and I appreciate that. You know, it's, it's, you know, as you know, you know, we've been dealing with the Emerald Ashbor issue and, you know, there's always those, those things out there that we don't know, you know, what's coming. You know, just recently, you know, I don't know if you're aware of the the Beechtree Disease, you know, which is the latest one, which is, you know, coming down the road. So, you know, just dealing with these invasives that, you know, you really don't know what's around the corner. You know, and ideally, you want to be proactive in these situations. So, you know, again, I just appreciate the support of, of the council and, and, you know, when these things come up, knowing that we can come to you and say, this is, you know, a problem that's arising and, you know, you know, how should we move forward?
Nothing for me.
All right, nothing else from this side, Amber?
Okay, thanks, guys. Rich, do you have any questions for us?
I don't believe so. No. Is that okay?
That is totally fine, totally fine. You can come up with questions later and feel free to reach out to us as well. You're not, not limited to your five minutes here, for sure.
Great.
So as I just said to Elijah, we are going into executive session at the end of this meeting and, and hope to have some decisions and staff will reach out to you.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you and feel free to stick around if you want.
It's been a long day. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get going.
Totally get it. Totally get it. Thanks again. Take care. All right, well, I am not seeing anybody else. You guys don't have anybody else in the room?
No.
And I'm not seeing any names that I don't recognize on Zoom, so I am going to move on to the next agenda item. And if folks join us, then we can always entertain a motion to go back and do some more interviews, but is Mr. Luck with us?
And he's about to walk in the room momentarily. There he is.
Okay.
It's your turn, Brad.
You're up, Brad. We're moving at warp speed tonight. All right. Thanks for joining us. So we have obviously your, your memo. Is there any, I will, take it away. Tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Just run through these things. You know, they're brief in bullet form, so just for some explanation, the first three are some grants that we've been receiving. Alyssa Callan is our Business Services Administrator and she's been doing a really nice job of of paying attention to those and reaching out and submitting applications. So we got through the National Parks and Rec Association, we got a coaches grant to train 250 coaches through the Positive Coaching Alliance. And they also came last week and trained 140 of our staff. Obviously, coaching principles are very similar to, or working with kids in any capacity, so that went really well. And this fall, we'll do another training and invite volunteer coaches from the community. The Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF Grant, we have been approved. There was no, like, caveats or anything. We were looking for all of the, like, maybe if possibly you've been awarded this funding. We haven't seen anything like that, so I wrote approximately 500,000. It's like 590 or 495 or something and, and change. And that's a 50/50 matching grant. And so we've, we've identified where those funds are coming from. You all approved the application, submitting the application. And we highlighted in there where our matching funds will come from. So assuming that process moves forward as planned, we can start construction in June of 26. So we've been talking just a little bit about whether or not, you know, between now and then, which is 12 months away, we're probably not going to do any work really at Cascade. I mean, it's very well maintained. The gentleman who works for us, Bob, maintains the park beautifully. But in terms of investments in any physical infrastructure, it won't happen until then. But the nice thing is we have a 12-month window for Matt Smith to really line up all of those vendors and just say that. And our plan, this is not fully concrete at the moment, is probably to shut that park down for next summer and do all the work with the goal of opening it back up for fall. You know, there's, there's arguments both ways, but I think we'd rather get the work done first and get it open as soon as possible. So that, that park may be a bit offline or completely offline next summer, but we'll obviously let people know when we get to that point. But pretty exciting for a park that is due for a redevelopment, so.
The pickleball community will be very excited.
Yeah, yeah, we're really, we're really excited about that, so. So we're looking forward to that. We did get a preschool arts grant for $6,000 and Christine M. McGlaughlin worked with Tina Logan from the Maple Street space to, to do several month project called Mindful Mosaics, incorporating the preschool values into some art pieces. And they had a gala just last month for their families and friends, so that was really great. Direct Advisory Committee launched in April. We've now met twice. We're meeting every other month. Obviously, we can add meetings as needed. But again, the goal in between months is to try and, to try and get them engaged and involved in some different things and so. But that's been off to a good start. As I mentioned, we had staff training. We had 140 staff at staff training last, last week and we were missing several people who were off or had vacations or other things, so it's a very robust summer staff and a very, very good summer staff. I don't have percentages on, on retention rates. I think every single lifeguard or swim lesson instructor from last summer is back except for one. And then the camp retention rate is extremely high. So those are really good signs that people are coming back and enjoying their work. Alex Vincy was hired back in May as the Grounds and Facilities Tech. He replaced the position that Matt used to have since Matt was promoted to the Grounds and Facilities Director. We just restructured the Licensed Childcare Leadership Team. We had a departure from one of our co-directors who took a new position elsewhere. And it just presented an opportunity to rethink how things are structured. Sometimes those structures evolve over time and due to people and sometimes that's never the best way to do it, but sometimes that's just how it actually happens. And so we had the opportunity to kind of reset and restructure, I think, according to how positions should be aligned. And so we're really pleased. Rosie Gallo has been hired as the Director of Licensed Childcare. She was previously a co-director. And Cass Valone is the Assistant Director with Licensed Childcare for Staff Support or for Kids' Support and Success. And we're in the process of hiring a few other positions. Cass, I would have to also give a shout out to Cass and Alyssa, who are holding down the fort. One co-director left and within two weeks, the other had her baby. So Rosie is doing great and she's brought the baby by a few times, but she's not with us until September. So Cass and Alyssa are stepping up to the plate big time. I, I just listed some of our bigger programs. Obviously, there were a lot more in here and some of our, some of our bigger events over the last six months. There's also some program information in your packet, if you had the opportunity to read it, that I thought was far more insightful than this in terms of, not only the programs that we're doing, but those who are, who are leading and running them. I thought there was some good information in there. And I did list a lot of the things that Julie is doing with the seniors. She's doing a really amazing job. We've been getting really great feedback and everything she's seen, you know, the walking club, the everything, the hiking club, the walking club, the Elvis impersonator, the ukulele performance. It's just, they're, they're having great numbers. The ukulele performance had 40 some odd people. Elvis impersonator had 40 some odd people. She had 17 in her bird watching class. She has cooking classes lined up and luncheons and we'll do a senior picnic in September, so she's just off and running. It's now a, a year that she's been here, but she's just doing a great job. I looked back from January to when this came out last week and almost 95,000 people through the entrances at Maple Street Park. So it's a, it's a busy hopping place. And lastly, we've talked about this and spent a lot of time talking about it at the retreat. But we have continued to explore a future gym facility at Maple Street Park. And part of the impetus for that is the changes we really have seen since COVID in terms of, of how the school district operates, excuse me, how the school district operates and when the schools are available for outside of school programming, which we've come to fully respect and understand that they are prioritizing education and they're prioritizing their programs. And they also have experienced, you know, some reductions in their budgets, some staffing shortages. And all of those things have drastically diminished the availability of gym time. And as you know, in our community and in many communities, the school gym facilities are the community gym facilities that they're, they're aren't separate. And that works well for, for a lot of reasons, mostly because the school day is, is not when the rec portion is needed. So it somewhat has balanced itself out over time. But when the district starts to reduce that time and availability, it has had a pretty significant impact on us and we continue to just get worried about our ability to provide programming without space. So as we get those those drawings done a little bit further, at some point, we'll be back to share those with you to, to, you know, see what, what's possible. In terms of looking forward, I'm not sure if you're all familiar, but next year for, for those Hiawatha School will be K1, 2, and Fleming will be 3, 4, 5. And for after-school, for the Rec Kids Program, all of the kids who participate in Rec Kids will vacate Hiawatha School. The kindergartners will continue to come to the park. And the first and second graders will go to Summit Street School, which is now vacant, other than the ARC program downstairs and the two preschool classrooms upstairs. And so that was mutually beneficial for both us and the school district to take those kids there. I think it's a, a positive recognition of our partnership with them. They'll be transporting them. We don't have the means to transport that many kids out of, that are participating in those programs because it's about 120 kids. So 40 of them will come to Maple Street for the kindergarten-only program. 80 of them will go to first and second grade program at Summit Street School. So parents will need to pick up at a different location than, than where their kid attended school. That's not a foreign concept. Excuse me, for the last several years, those kids that are in kindergarten at Essex Elementary School have been attending Rec Kids at the park. So that's obviously a much bigger community. So I realize that could be challenging for some families, but I think overall it's a win-win. It frees us. Hiawatha is the smallest school and so getting out of there is, is a really great opportunity for us. It's also a good opportunity for them with a larger staff to have more spaces to do professional development and have meetings and those kinds of things without 80 kids running around that building or even 120 kids. So we're very pleased with that. And as I was talking about, our Essex Elementary Kindergartners will now stay onsite at Essex Elementary and not be bused into the city. And the primary driver of that is we just don't have the capacity to do that. It requires a CDL driver. And we just, we're not a busing operation, so we don't have a plethora of CDL drivers. If somebody is sick or out, we don't have a backup CDL driver. In, in those cases, we would not be able to transport those kids. So it's a change we've been needing to make for a little while and we're, we're finally doing that. We're now hiring for several positions. And those are listed, soon to be hiring a program director. Lindsay Masuko, who's been with us for the past three years, has taken on a new role and so will be advertising for a new program-related position. And our longtime, I don't know if it's 16, I think she's completing her 16th year. Christina McGlaughlin has been our preschool director. Our preschool started out in one of the back multipurpose rooms at Maple Street Park when we hired Christina and has grown and flourished ever since then. It is now, as you all know, at Park Street School with three classrooms. She has kind of, she has decided that she's fulfilled her, she's filled her bucket. And she, and that's a preschool reference. She has grown this program from literally zero kids to 40, supporting 42 kids every day, seven full-time staff, its own building, a beautiful playground and a beautiful facility. And there's always more that can be done, but she really feels like she's, she's accomplished what she came and set out to do and she's ready for life's next challenge. So sad to see both of them go.
He was my son's first preschool teacher.
Yes.
He was in the first class.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty wild. She's been there a really long time.
Miss Christina. I miss her.
Yeah. We will too. We are moving towards a new software We are moving towards a new software system called Kaizen. We're really excited about the opportunity and we'll be launching that this fall. So switching up what people are used to in terms of the registration interface and access. And so we have started that process and. It will start fresh, so when families enroll in programs or people, individuals enroll in programs after August. They will be creating new households with new members and all of those things, the advantage is that we're kind of clearing out some old data and starting anew. But we're, we're excited about how that looks and how it will operate on the backend. In the capital budget this year is resourcing skate park and the basketball court. In terms of what's happening this summer, Maple Street Pool, summer day camps, specialty camps and community gardens. We have July fourth coming up next week, is that where we are? Yeah.
In between the rainy days and the hot days.
We have some entertainment scheduled at the park throughout the summer and of course, end the summer with the pool dog day. We posted this on, on social media the other day, on Monday, we had almost twenty-three hundred people come through Maple Street Park and Pool. We had four hundred and forty-six kids in summer day camps and seventy-five swim lessons and fifty-five kids in summer specialty camps, so. It was a really busy day, a really tough day and tough start of the week to begin your summer. And, and start your summer camp experience for kids and start your swim lessons and as a staff to start that way. But looking at it with the glass half full. If you can get through those two days in, in where it feels like one oh three. You can pretty much get through the rest of the summer, so as challenging as it was. For kids and staff and families, I think it was a great success and again, the staff, much kudos to the staff who are really doing a great job. And lastly, just the continued gym exploration that I talked about earlier and we'll be coming to you as soon as we can. Regina always tells me I talk too fast. You guys are on a roll, so I wanted to keep this moving.
Thanks Brad, appreciate that.
Speed at which you talk.
Oh fantastic. See that?
Itches my brain.
Regina's, you're taking notes on that.
The trouble of having to hold down for two X speed.
Hey, the only question I was gonna ask you is whether you met maximum capacity the last two days, I think you kind of touched upon it, so.
Been close, you know, it's interesting, I think sometimes on the hottest days, some people avoid and think it's gonna be crazy, so it's sometimes those middle, middle ground days. But I'm not sure if we, I'm not sure if we actually hit it, it just made it so it was really, really steady from, from twelve to eight and I even on. I don't, on Monday night, I brought my kids just to the last ten minutes and there was still a good, a lot of people there. So it's just made for really steady days.
Well, I saw ninety degrees the end of next week again, so hang on. Anybody have any questions for Brad?
I do, but nobody else, okay. So I did want to bring up one thing because I did speak to a resident from Wickham Woods recently on West Street. As they were walking and we were having a conversation and I heard a comment this time that was similar to a comment that Elaine and I heard last year. When we were Wickham Woods talking about the budget, but it was sort of like this feeling or acknowledgement that they're, that they felt disconnected a bit from the city. And it also sounded like based on that, their experience, they didn't feel. That Wickham Woods and E, like, because one of the suggestions I made was the senior programs, right? But I, I'll just word it this way, I, I think, I wonder if there, because I don't know if there is. But it wasn't her relationship or connection between EJR P and Wickham Woods programs, which. I could see that would be an interesting partnership and again, if, if. These individuals live in our city, so I'd like them to feel a part of it or a little bit closer, so I don't know.
Sure.
If, if we are doing something.
Yeah, and I'm gonna misspeak because I don't know the details, but Julie has, has been over there and has done a program over there. And when, last year when we were in the midst of hiring for Julie's position, we had done. We held a meeting over there with the residents to talk about things that they're interested in and those kinds of things, so. I can reiterate that to her, but I can assure you, we've been in touch and she specifically has, has been over there. So I'm sure we could do more and better and maybe that person missed, missed that opportunity. And I think once this construction is done too and we can return to having a home base at Two Lincoln for the senior center, that will be helpful as well, so we can give them. There's not, I mean, we could tell them right now where to go for bingo on certain days and mahjong uncertain days and. But when there's a centralized place, I think that will be helpful too.
Yeah, I agree, so on that particular note, I, I do want to say and I'd like to get your take on the gym project. Only because of the fact that, yes, we talked about it a little bit because it came up in the retreat. As you spoke about it tonight, again, totally understand the relationship with the school district and the, the situation with the gyms there. But as we talked about this a while ago, even last year, we talked about this, again, there was to be a study done on, on this. Rec buildings, rec facilities to try to take a look at this, so I'd like to understand a little bit better about what you're thinking about in terms of this gym. Because when I hear gym, I'm only thinking of the gym versus what I would like for us to eventually have a discussion about is having. A community center facility that would house, you know, the senior, the seniors. The other programs that EJR P is doing, the gym, this would be a hub. For everyone to come to, we would be able to have multi-generational programs that way, we would be able to. Have a home for everybody that was centered around the same types of programs and I think that would be a big benefit to everyone, easy access. To go to a program, go to the pool, go to the gym, whatever it may be, and I think it would be, it would be a great. Amenity for this particular community, so. Is there any other thinking besides the gym or, so I'd like to understand that.
Yeah, I mean, we'd love to, to do all of that if that is in the appetite of the board or the council and the community, I, I mean. Yeah, I would love a community center and to build and include all of those things. I'm super mindful of the cost of construction right now and it is, it's incredible and. So there's like, there's kind of two ways to go about this, right, I mean, I guess you all as a board at some point could talk about. About what you think is a tolerable bond amount and Jess, Jess I'm sure could put together a chart briefly of. For X dollars, this is what it would cost per household on the tax rate and, and those kinds of things. I know from the extent that we've already done just looking at gymnasiums. It is, it's really expensive. So our, our biggest, you know, we talked about the study and, and what Marcus, you're referencing is that we need to do a new master plan and that's been. On our, on our list to do and as a part of that, we had been talking about. Because you can kind of add bits and pieces to that master plan that we developed by a consultant is a facility feasibility study and. What we know internally and I think actually there was no collusion on those program reports, I think they, all of those program directors and the assistant directors spoke about space, space, space. And that is our number one challenge and concern as a department, that's what we see and what we know. We are lacking and it will, it will highly impact our existing programs, which are really big, in particular, the sport of basketball, which runs. It's the longest season of the year during, during the time that you need indoor facilities. So it would be really fun to explore all sorts of other things, it would be awesome to put a glass roof over Maple Street Pool, it would. Be really fun to have more multipurpose spaces, it would be cool to have, you know, cooking spaces, to have a, a stage. Place area, to have a place that other community groups can, can have meeting space, I mean, we can all generate kind of that list of what somebody would go through. And if that's where you want us to head or add, we can, I just know that this cost is, is astronomical and I don't. I just don't have a great sense of what you all and or the community is going to be willing to, to go in at. And so for, sorry, for us, it, the gym is the most important piece and I think anything else could be added on those multipurpose rooms and spaces, senior space. Multi-general, multi-generational spaces, teen center, like, we could imagine the world, but for us, we know it needs to center around basketball courts.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand that, I understand that challenge, I don't know the construction costs are ever gonna go down, so it's like. There's never gonna be a good time, that's always gonna be a problem and I think having some sort of. Study done so that we can understand the complexity of the need. The current state condition of the facilities we have along with what that growth might look like over the next five to ten years, just so that we can. Have some measurement of what this might look like. I think it would really help us develop the discussion we want to have, I know from like. Sorry, that I want, that I know I want. You know, as we talked about at the retreat, this did come up as one of those top things, I will also acknowledge though that this was not a top thing for counselors. This is a top thing, this is one of the top things and, and you know, as staff contributed to that, those priorities. But it is a discussion that I, I would like to have around that because I do know that there are other facilities, whether it's the public works facility that needs work as well. The fire department, I believe, has needs as well in the future that will. We then need to have a discussion about whether or not we do something with that building or we. Shift accommodations to try to match their needs. And I'm sure that there are other things to, not mentioning right now, but I think, you know, with all that being said, I think I would like to go into it. With that level of knowledge and understanding so that again, we can make a decision of whether or not we want to move forward with it and. When we go to the community to have that discussion, we can. Post bullet points and talking points to discuss this issue to see if they're willing and ready to take this on. Because whether it's just the gym or entire facility, I. I don't think it's really gonna matter that much, both are expensive.
Can I clarify, is, in terms of what you're thinking, is it a. Facility feasibility study for all of those city spaces that you just discussed and trying to sort that out in comparison or is it really. The facility study of really this like dream of what we would love to have for the community at, at the rec facility?
I appreciate you asking that because honestly, when I started talking about this, it was just about that, but as you asked the question, you're right. Because I, there are other conversations that have happened along the way that I think. Do mean that we need to take a look at the other buildings and facilities as well, but. I'm not sure how much deep dive we're gonna need on public workspace, I don't know what. How much discussion we need around. You know, at some point, doing whatever upgrades, modifications we need to accommodate the firepower. And or other things.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it is fairly clear that in terms of either. We're thinking about major reconstruction or major additions or changes to buildings. Public Works is really in dire needs. The fire department, I think probably for sure has a future need, it's just tough to know exactly when that need is gonna come through. The EJR P gym space need is immediate. And then there's likely really wastewater treatment facility needs that are more on the immediate sort of short-term scale. And I think we, I think without a whole lot of effort and sort of analysis or getting a lot more information from somebody to kind of put that together. For us in a comprehensive way. Those are the needs pretty clearly in terms of larger real dollar amounts, there's a whole slew of other. You know, small maintenance kinds of things that will come up all the time. But, you know, and the wastewater lives in a little bit of a different world because we have the tri-town and how those things are funded are a little bit of a different ballgame. But, yeah, so I don't, I don't know if that helps you, I totally appreciate the. Point that if we are gonna go to the community with any level of bond vote, we need to be, have a lot of. Be very clear about why we're asking and what those needs are that we're trying to fulfill.
Yeah, so I think otherwise if we're talking, because again, I'm. Respond. Before, I, I would have said, really, we're gonna, we're gonna spend millions of dollars on a facility for one sport? That would have been my, that would have been my non-nuanced answer back in the day. So, yeah, having that detail will provide better conversation with the community.
Yeah, and I think, I'm sure Brad will say, basketball is a big program need, that gym space would, can be used for a whole slew of things.
Yeah, I mean, a gym is as multipurpose as, as you get, right, I mean, you can. You can play pickleball in a gym, you can play tennis, you can play football, basketball, baseball, you can have meetings in gyms, you can host graduations and like. There's a lot that, that facility, so I'm talking basketball, gymnasium space. But when you have the space, you can then program it and, and meet all, meet other community needs beyond, beyond the sport.
And, and I just want, I want to first say, I appreciate that nuance because when I hear gymnasium, I say, oh, great, that will come from program fees, right? Not gonna, in my mind, you're not gonna say, hey, residents of Essex Junction, we need millions of dollars for this gymnasium, so EJR P can host basketball programs. And collect funds for those programs and oh, by the way, you're on the hook to repay that. I think, so that's a, that's a thing for me was we talked about gymnasium spaces, like, well, okay, that's pretty easy, we'll ask for the money upfront and then be regrouped through program fees. They're offsetting penalties pretty much in my book. So there's a little bit of a nuance there if we're gonna talk about additional space or additional uses for that space, so that's, I. My perspective where I'm sitting right now is that's, that's kind of how I looked at it. I would. I guess I would like to hear more information about this as we move on because I think it's going to be, you know, like I just said, I think it's. It's a, a space for program, revenue generating programs for EJR P. And I think that's a key piece that we need to keep in mind.
I think this is a large topic that is definitely going to need to be discussed at a later time, I'm gonna kind of bring us back to this, this is a department head brief with Brad. And Brad is, Brad is now taking the thirty minutes that we had gained.
Parting question to Brad before he goes, and it's just a clarifying question.
Don't ask about the gym.
No, the memorial park, does it fall to EJR P?
Yeah, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked it because this came up in rec advisory recently and we've been sorting that out a little bit in the last couple of years. So it's really, at this point, kind of jointly managed between Public Works and EJR P. We're, we're trying to get clarity on things like that, that if it's called a park, then shouldn't it be part of Parks and Rec? However, Public Works already mows the grass at Two Lincoln and at the Brownell. And so for them to pack up shop and not then go take care of that park doesn't really make sense, so they continue to manage that aspect. We're in charge of the fountain and the changing of the flags. I say all of that with the caveat that I've been extremely clear with Regina. Because we just kind of assumed these responsibilities in the last several months. We do not have any money in our ten-year capital plan allocated for the refurberation of Veterans. in our 10 year capital plan allocated for the refurberation of Veterans Memorial Park. And so while we're happy to take that on as a Parks and Rec Department um to to maintain it. There has, for whatever reason, in the, in the history of that park, there has not been a plan for capital for for continuing to maintain it. And um, we don't have that that ability. So we can facilitate that and we can get quotes and we can hire contractors. Um, but there, I don't, as far as I understand, there is no budget when any of the budgets that Jess has access to um, to do anything with that park.
Can I ask just a clarifying question then? Because that park when it was built was the Essex Veterans Memorial Park to infer both Essex and Essex Junction, right? So it's got names of of both residences of both municipalities. And so I'm wondering if there's A, an opportunity to work with the town in some way, but also if there's any capacity for private fundraising from maybe if the rec advisory board has any members that might be able to go out and you know, if you walked up to businesses and said, hey, we're trying to do this, here's what we need, and you just help support, you know, renovating this park. I would be willing to bet you the cash would flow. Just root for thought, and I'll end it there.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I think it's um, makes great sense. That is probably the best way to go about that. It is a just of all the things.
I definitely appreciate the fact that, you know, it's, it was this, this weird thing where it was both and it's now one and it was public works and it's now you know, the shared. So I understand it's in the transition, but I also understand that, you know, especially to me, it's extremely important. Uh, so I don't want to see it fall by the wayside. And I know there's, there's lots of other folks that feel the same way. So I just bring it up, put it in the forefront.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Brad. Have a good night. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. All right. Next, we got, Chris has patiently been waiting for the discussion and consideration of amendments to municipal code, chapter nine and 18, and my short is junk. Because I'm not reading the whole thing, so take it away.
Right, so uh, the county development department is uh, in charge of uh, the enforcement of the land development code, but also uh, certain uh, parts of uh, the municipal code. Tend to fall under uh, the coming development department's responsibility. Um, we work with the uh, uh, the Essex Police Department to figure out, you know, who what they will attend to and and what they would like us to um, uh, kind of take care of without so much of their involvement. And chapter 18, uh, the ordinance about junk often uh, falls uh, onto our uh, hands. So we at this department have been um, tracking code enforcement uh, more carefully over uh, the last year and a half or so. We have been following up more rigorously uh, with cases of non compliance and really trying to encourage uh, folks to remediate this in any situations that's uh, that are uh, against ordinances or against the land development code. Um, and for the most part, just kind of gentle reminders and uh, can I kind of request to come into compliance works, but there are cases uh, of chronic non compliance that require escalation. These amendments to the municipal code uh, as proposed are meant to uh, make that a little bit easier. Uh, the, the memo that's in the packet explains uh, the, the gist of why um, these have been being put together. Um, and they have been put together uh, in consultation with um, the city attorney. But uh, I will welcome any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Um, I did have a couple of questions before I shoot it to everyone else. Um, and then I think one of the comments that you had to us was about whether we were planning on establishing a um, ordinance appeals board. Um, so I guess I'll answer that question from my own perspective. I think my preference would be, we already have a kind of difficult time filling this, the committees that we have. Um, so I would prefer to keep that with the council for now and then kind of reassess if we needed to because I am assuming we could just, you know, do another public hearing and change that specific ordinance if we if we needed to. I'm not sure what the council, the rest of the council feels about that particular position. Is everybody on board with keeping it with council?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm seeing nods, so that's good. Uh, the appeal, the ordinance appeals board is the council, not a separate committee that we would create. So we would act similar to like, I mean, definitely correct me if I'm wrong, Regina Chris, but we would act similar in the capacity of like a the liquor control and and cannabis, like, this would just be another part of, part of our job essentially is to hear these appeals if there are any dog, dog complaints, those kinds of things.
Yes, and I can, just for some context, I can tell you um, on another ordinance that we were looking at, this um, ordinance appeals board was referenced and I asked Terry and Susan, they have never heard of this appeals board ever getting appointed or pulled together. So it seems to make sense to me that for simplicity at this point, we um, have the city council acting as that board.
I just kind of, I had a couple of proposed changes that hopefully are not um, not huge. I mean, I think we have to warn a public hearing anyways, and so it's going to be based on whatever we do tonight. Um, so I had a friendly amendment to section set nine oh five. City shall be entitled to seek attorney's fees and costs, to add the words and costs. Uh, that's a little nuance that I've learned in my day job that if you don't have that, the court won't give it to you. And then I had a question about eighteen oh one. Section 11, it says farm vehicles and equipment are excluded from this definition of motor vehicles. Is that only in the planned ag district or is that in all districts?
So, oh, that was previously um, in all districts. But uh, now that there's, there's a, yeah, the, the Supreme Court decision um, that says that municipalities actually might have uh, some uh, more powers to uh, regulate that. I have written in um, that this only applies to the planned ag, uh, planning agriculture zoning district.
You have that on in a different section or you have that on your copy that we don't have for that.
Definition number eight, page forty six in the packet.
Yeah. Definition eight. I don't know what I'm looking at.
Forty five to forty.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. Applied to equipment or it's just a motor vehicles is defined separately below. And doesn't, and doesn't refer, it just says excluded from this definition. So I was just confused, but as long as we're covering it, we're cool. I'm, I'm following. Uh, question about eighteen oh two, there's a reference to criminal penalties?
That's um, is that, let me see.
It's a legacy that just needs to be.
It may have been with legacy, um, just search for the word criminal.
It's in section eighteen oh two, what would be like the second sentence essentially, kind of weird, has a weird.
Right, it says, yeah, it says use of civil and criminal penalties, but if, if the whole ordinance is uh, is uh, determined to be civil, that's uh, the criminal should be removed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Um, and then I think I wrote myself a note and don't understand my own notes, I get to save you from that piece. Um, and then I think in seven, in section eighteen oh five A, I think this is a legacy of is indicated. Um, the last known address of the owner is indicated in the town of Essex, current real estate tax assessment records. Should be city, as far as I know.
Yeah, I guess we could change, I, I guess, I, I didn't, I, I didn't think about changing that because uh, of how assessments is still a kind of a joint service, but um, I guess it might not be forever, so uh, probably doesn't hurt to just change it to city of Essex Junction.
Yeah, I see, I see where you're coming from. Uh, I don't know what other folks think, but.
Say town of Essex or city of Essex Junction, that way we cover both bases.
I think we can.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the wording is, you're sending it to the last known address of the owner. We are going to maintain that address though, not the town of Essex, because we maintain the grand list. So I think it's, I think it should be city.
That makes sense.
Um, and then yeah, again, I still don't understand my own co, my own note to myself, so I will open it up to everybody else. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Chris?
No, none on this side.
Okay. I believe you are looking for a motion.
That's correct. It's uh, and and there's a recommended motion.
Okay.
City Council warned a public hearing on July twenty third, twenty twenty five at six thirty PM to receive comment on changes to the Essex Junction Municipal Ordinance, chapter nine and chapter eighteen as presented with any edits that we've discussed as well.
Oh, second.
Thank you. All in favor? No nays. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate the work on that. And we'll see you, we'll see you again soon.
All right.
All right, now we're moving, we're back on track, guys. We're cruising again. All right. Five D, discussion of retreat summary and council engagement plan framework. Regina, do you want, we got Ashley.
Let me just uh, introduce. So um, we had your retreat earlier this month. Um, so we wanted to try to um, take some time to capture what was discussed that day. Uh, somewhat so that the community has an opportunity to understand what was captured and discussed that day. Um, but also to give you folks an opportunity to um, reflect or um, and think through um, the priorities from that, from that day. Um, and then also, from the morning discussion, spent quite a time, quite amount of time on an engagement plan. So really what you've got in the packet is just a capturing of all the ideas and the discussion that kind of came out of that. Out of that discussion, um, I think there's a lot of interesting ideas on there. They may not be the right ideas. This really is intended to be kind of a, a working document and something to get in front of you for the first time. But I think for that second piece, uh, our intention is that we will be really coming back probably. And we can put that item back on a business item in the future to really sort of talk about that and kind of discuss it more. Okay, so with that, I'll hand it over to Ashley. To just uh, touch on some highlights from.
Thanks Regina. Um, so how I wrote my memo down is kind of how Regina discussed it prior. We talked about the retreat summary and then move into the council engagement plan. Uh, as you guys know, we started out the day with just the council and then uh, we really talked about some of those uh, strategic vision and community building uh, responsibilities of council. You guys came up with some priorities that morning. Uh, one of them was the need for community engagement. Uh, we also looked at like public participation and enhancing cooperation between the city and Champlain Valley Expo. All of the information that uh, we discussed is in this memo for anybody who wants to uh, go back to it. Uh, the second part of the day, we went in with the department heads and uh, we looked at some action items that we would want to look at for the next fiscal year um, and working on our department work plans. Um, within that, we did some, we came up with action times for each of the six pillars and then did some voting between for the department heads and the council. Uh, you will see in the packet that there is a kind of spreadsheet table that has some green highlights and some yellow highlights. Uh, those were, the green were the top priorities that came out from the department heads and uh, the city council. The ones in the yellow were the ones that the council had the majority uh, that they had votes on, so three or more uh, on those areas. Um, we also uh, you know, want to address uh, that this obviously doesn't have some of those bigger talking points like housing, but it is stuff that is already on current department work plans. Um, are things, projects that we're already working on, like the connect the junction project that Chris is working on uh, to address those needs. So it's not something that we're forgetting, they're going to be incorporated, they are already incorporated into work plans or already in that prioritization list. All of the items that we came up with uh, from that second part of the day and from the councils beginning sessions have been incorporated or will be incorporated into the prioritization list, so those aren't going away. Uh, they will just be moved down to to uh, later dates or something for us to revisit later on uh, next year at our, our at a retreat. I will stop there, um, so we can kind of break it into two sections and see if there's any reflection or any thoughts that the council has about the retreat um, or any of the priority items um, so that you guys can give us a better understanding of what Regina and I need to give to the department heads when we start building our work plans for FY twenty six, twenty seven.
Anyone in the room have any comments for Ashley?
I just wanted to say that, um, and I appreciate you putting this together so we could share this because uh, you know, for anybody to watch, to watch. Yeah, it's, it's a little tricky. Um, so I appreciate the fact that we've, we've got this summary coming out of it. I did want to acknowledge, because we had this discussion this morning. I mentioned this to Regina earlier. You know, as, as it's put in here, the city council engagement plan framework, you know, as we discussed at the retreat. We're looking for, you know, a full community engagement kind of plan program, but this is again to start the initial conversation, some of the ideas that we've, we put down here and we've acknowledged as members of the council that we are we want to be a part of this and a big part of this. And we think there's an opportunity for us to be a big part of this. Um, so I appreciate the fact that this is here so that we can, we can continue to talk about it. I am really looking forward to talking about things like the committees and and uh, other things that we, you know, kind of came out of that particular discussion, so we can try to move some of these priorities forward. Because I think committees is really going to help us to move some of these bigger topics on. And uh, you know, again, it's part of the community engagement, part of that was making sure that we had opportunities for the community to participate in that out, in those efforts, so.
Other folks?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I kind of want to re, reiterate a comment that I made during the retreat in that I think that a lot of the, that we didn't have as much of a focus of housing as I would have liked to see come out of that. And upon reflection, I think that's kind of the, the method of voting, had lots of uh, different housing initiatives. So I think it sort of distributed the voting. So I don't know if that was uh, why that happened or not, but I guess, but uh, this is a, this is my long winded way of agreeing with Marcus that I'd like to see some, I'm focused on standing up some of those committees since it sounds like that's kind of a, um, the, one of the current bottlenecks, especially as our as uh, one of our PC members I mentioned uh, in his uh, interview tonight.
Tim Lane.
Good.
I think that's pretty much accurately reflects what it was. I, I look back on that day with a great bit of fondness. I had a very good time with it. I thought it was very well done. Uh, and it was certainly nice to spend the day with everyone to kind of figure it all out together. And Sue did a great job facilitating the whole thing. It's my first experience with her and she was absolutely wonderful, so. I had a very good experience all the way around.
No, the summary is great. Um, I think that
The emphasis we're hearing on committee creation. Is really important and it's going to have to become a part of the budget conversation later in the packet.
Thanks, uh, yeah, I mean, I'll reiterate what everybody else said, uh, it was great to have the retreat, we've been talking about it. For as long as I've been on the council slash. Um, so it was good to, to do it and uh, and I look forward to annually doing it. Um, so. I think Ashley, you're good to start part two.
Right, great. So uh, as I mentioned, one of the things that came out of that discussion at the very beginning was the community engagement piece and the need for the council to have a. Um, engagement uh, plan. Uh, it's also something that came up during the second part of the day and was the number tied for number three. On the priority list. Uh, so uh, during that time, uh, we took the notes from uh, what we discussed dur-. During that first part of the day, um, some of the feedback that you guys were talking about, some of the ideas that came out, and that's where that table. Um, has come out of. You guys, we kind of, from that uh, discussion, we came up with the three goals, which was the residents being aware of who the city council members are. And feel the council is approachable, the residents having multiple ways to interact with the council and improving the structure of the city council meetings. We thought those were the three main things that came out of that discussion that we had. And then we kind of started populating some of the things that the staff. Half is either already doing or um, could help with. And then um, what the council is kind of, what they could start working on uh, to help move these areas along. As Regina mentioned, this is a very rough draft, um. We're just started trying to put in the ideas from the day down on paper so that we could start having. Um, getting our ideas together and start seeing where that might move. Um, I will point out that there's some things on there that have already started, I saw you guys wearing your lovely name tags tonight, so I was happy to see that. Um, and then I have in the packet and a big calendar that I've started. Um, just with some of the upcoming events that are happening in the next few months and then populating some of those things that are annual that. Uh, we know that was gonna happen, obviously. That's also a working document and I'll continue to populate that and send out emails to the council to say, hey, are you interested in participating, paid in X Y Z? I'm gonna send you guys out one for the rest of the events in July that we have coming up, um, that I haven't, that are obviously on here, but um. And then there's some that I don't even have on that, that I've got this week that have come up. Um, so I think that's also a working document that will continue to grow and changes as the time goes. Um, so again, this is a way for us. To start having this discussion on this engagement plan, um, and um, really uh, just trying to get uh, some feedback. And an opportunity for, have an opportunity for you guys to discuss this, and as Regina mentioned, it can be a future agenda item that we uh, look at as well.
Thanks, Ashley. Uh, yeah, Regina and Ashley both touched upon, this is, this was a very large portion of our one and a half hours where we were by ourselves. Um, so I know there is a lot of comments, concerns about this piece. We have allocated twenty minutes to this discussion, so I'd like to keep it at a thirty thousand foot level with the understanding that this. Engagement plan is coming back to the council as a separate item where we can discuss more in detail. What, what, what the council's looking for in, in this evolving document. Um. I will also just add that one thing before I forget. Um. One of the, one of the things we talked about was this concept of um. The meeting structure. And so I know that Regina had sent around an email earlier today saying that we were planning on cancelling the July ninth meeting. Um, but. At the eleventh hour, I had a thought. Um, so my apologies that it wasn't the eleventh hour, but my thinking, if everyone is on board with it, is that instead of cancelling that July ninth meeting. We schedule a city council meeting from six-thirty to seven-thirty, which is just an open public forum for folks to just come. And tell us whatever they want that's on their, that's on their uh, they're on their chest, just get it off their chest. Um, and this is just kind of a way to test out that theory, that, that concept of, that Sue was mentioning where you just have. No agenda item, it literally is just come and, come and, come and talk to us. Um, so if everyone is on board, we do have a plan to, to get that in place for July ninth, um, but I just, I think we do need a quorum, so. Um. Everyone good with that? Yay.
Absolutely.
True.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any comments for Ashley on the count, on the engagement plan, other than my ramble?
No, cause it's just the start, so I think there's more discussion to come, so I'm totally fine with that, if nothing else, uh. Just acknowledge that, you know, we do have the five, Fourth of July event on this calendar. Um, and uh, there are at least a couple of us that are gonna be at the Fourth of July, wearing our name tags, walking around, so. Um, yeah. Hopefully people, you know, we'll be saying hi to people, so hopefully they'll be saying hi to us. Um, but uh. You know, hopefully this is the start of, you know, again, more dialogue between. Uh. You know, the city and its residents.
And the Essex Reporter did launch today the Get to Know Your Council. Section, um, so that's great, um, they will cover every counselor. And um, I'm hoping that's helpful as well to kind of get folks to understand we are approachable, please, please contact us. Elaine, Tim, Brian, anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, look forward to the next iteration.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Ashley, appreciate it. Regina, anything else you want to add?
Don't think so, I think that. Um, is all we needed.
Good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Feel free to stick around. Now, lots more fun. We're moving on, five E, Discussion of FY twenty-seven Budget Direction, Regina.
You've got a memo in um, in your packet, page sixty-three in the packet. Um, so really, uh, the main point of this agenda item is to get some direction from the council. Um, now that we've got some sort of priority um. Direction on the policy level and project work uh, from the retreat and just the agenda item before this. Um, it would be very helpful for staff to have a budget range. Target for um, what you are looking for, for your FY twenty-seven budget. Um, staff will provide um, work, um. Budget and work plan instructions to all department heads um, in July. And it's great to have a target to work with. Um, we, two years ago, we did not have a target and it was a little bit of a tough process, so. That's the.
Who wants to start with that target? Last year, just as a reminder, last year was a three percent target. And I do want to just point out in Regina's email. Said while we were able to meet that goal, maybe difficult to target this for two years in a row. Who wants to start? Not everybody jump. Thanks, Elaine.
Um, over the years, three percent has served as sort of a de facto target. Regardless of the conditions of the, of inflation or conditions of whatever's going on in the world and the state, three percent. Has sort of just been. The, the average expectation, so um, I would not recommend taking a level funding approach because that is a cut. And. I think even though we had three percent last year and we might not be able to hit three percent next year. I think that's a safe target. And. Within that, we can account for some of the increases coming from the agreement. Um, we know that we're going to have healthcare costs increases, but we don't know what they'll be, but we can assume they'll be double digits. Um. There could be any number of things, I think it would be, um, I think three percent. Is a good target, understanding that. We may not hit it.
Thanks, Elaine. Other folks?
I want to just add the caveat that. There were department budgets that came in kind of all over the place, with the understanding last year is three percent, they didn't, you know. The overall budget. Was, came in around there, but. There is, there's different needs for different departments, right, we've said wastewater has, you know, some substantial needs. We know that, and that may not be the case for, you know, another department, so. The, there has to be some understanding going out to the department heads that. Here's where we like to be, we understand that, you know, you bit the bullet this year. Don't, you know, if you can, don't, I. I had times to say, cause I don't want to feel like they just do it, but they're, they need to understand where we're at. The school rate, if I understand, has been bought down this year to one point one percent with seventy-four million dollars of one-time cash from the state. It puts us in a different perspective, but at the same time, I don't want to discount the people that have been struggling for. Numerous years now to pay their property taxes, their education taxes. And that's the message that needs to come out of all of this, is there are so many residents now within the city. Who are having extreme difficulty meeting their daily obligations, the folks that are on fixed incomes. Uh, and, and unlike, and the rents, the Autumn Pond is getting ready to open up a hundred and some odd new units and they start at twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. Like that's. You know, any, any increase in our municipal tax rate only stands to increase their rents. And that, that's, that's the world we're living in. And while it's nice to dream that you have all these wants, what is a want and what is a need, a need, we need. We're still in a bucket of needs. It would be nice to return to a bucket of wants. But that's not our reality, not until, you know, this healthcare piece gets figured out, it's, you know. We have final understanding of what the new education property tax, but, and I hate that that has to come into our conversation because. We still have to operate our government. But that's our reality. That's where we're at today, it's difficult. And I think that's where I'm at, and if it comes in at three percent or three and a half percent, then, you know. I think it objectively meets the target, but if, if it's not realistic, we need to know sooner than later.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be my, my thought too, is I think. We need to understand if we're, if we're gonna go with a three percent. Um, when, when it's presented to us, what's the implications of that, Regina, like, you know, we're, if we're at three percent for something, I don't know. Library, what is, what does that three percent mean, that, that there's cuts in X, Y, Z? Um, so that we can make an informed decision as to whether there needs to be some wiggle, wiggle room there, Tim, go ahead.
Just a caveat to that, we, we came in at three percent last year, but it equated to a two point six percent property tax increase. So. In my mind, there might be a little bit of wiggle room between the three percent budget and the three percent property tax increase. Just as a caveat, just as a, you know.
That's a good point. Um. Just two things I wanted to add, one is that, um, in the past, we've also seen. Without putting too much work on the staff. Si- suggested, like, a three percent draft budget. A, a two percent, a five percent, like, ha- o- offers, offer a window. For the staff to sort of have some fluctuations, there might be a department that needs to make a bigger investment in something than another department. We've done it in the past, I don't know if that's a practice that we want to try. Um. This time around, I just thought I'd remind folks that we've done that in the past. And the other thing I want to just remind folks is utilities. We, um, it was great having the enterprise funds, even just a draft. Early on, but then, as you pointed out, Regina, some of them went up substantially. After we had set the budget and. We were happy with our, our two point six percent property tax increase, but then the water bill, like, or one of the water rates doubled. You know, it would just, it was substantial and that, we have to just take it, that into account too, and we don't really have any control over those rates. So.
I think those, those are valid points, uh, my initial thinking was that we could do a three to five percent window. Um, I don't know if that's reasonable, Regina, as to, to Elaine's point about, you know, putting more of a burden on staff, I don't want to do that. Um, but if it is at all possible to have those scenarios.
Yeah, sorry, uh, sorry, Brian, just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this suggestion correctly.
Yeah.
Um. Cause Amber, you just used the term scenario. Do you mean produce a three percent budget and produce a five percent budget? Or do you mean we produce a budget somewhere between three and five percent? With. Explanations of. Uh. Of what's, well, as always, it will have explanations of what's in there that we think are critically important to be in there. Um. We could, um. Yeah, I'm just trying to think, sorry, let me leave it at the question, is your suggestion that we produce two budgets, or is it that we? Target someplace in between the two? Yeah, I think it's the former. Okay, two budgets, a range. What would it look like at three, what would it look like at five?
Correct.
Okay. And generally, the, I'm sorry, the, the staff would come back and say, well, this is what our department would do at three percent. Or this is what we would do at five percent, and if we had to come down to three percent, this is what we would do without, to get to that number. Okay.
Yep. Was that helpful, Regina?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Brian, did you have a comment?
I, I mean, mainly comment is that, this is my first time doing this, so my first question was going to be, what have we done in the past, which, which Elaine handled nicely, thank you. Um, so that says to me that uh, three percent seems like a reasonable, a reasonable target. I do like the, I do like if it's not too much work, the, the three and five percent scenarios, so that we can see what the, the consequences are holding to. Three percent, because I'm, you know, very, I'm very well aware and campaigned on the fact that our budget is driven by healthcare costs. So that, which is, I think that is addressed here, so fundamentally, three percent. You know, it is a cut if you, uh, if, if we keep the healthcare that we have for everybody.
Yep.
Marcus.
So, I agree with everything that's been said, I think. As a re- as a reminder, I'll also say this, last year, we did set that three percent target. We felt stretched to get to that three percent target, what was initially. Or toward the beginning of, of our process, we were delivered a one and a half, which was great. But after further discussion, the council identified that there were shortcomings, like. Trying to maintain our unfund balance and things of that nature. Um, so we made adjustments and we got back to three percent. Um, you know, or the two point six. But going out of that process last year, knowing what happened with the healthcare costs last year. Um, and anticipating what's gonna happen this year, the napkin math is simple, I don't know how we get to three percent this year. I think, I feel, yes, I would agree. I'm really struggling to see how we do it without cutting services. Um, so. There needs to be a real. Discussion in the community. About that, because if that's something we hold firm to. Then, um. What services don't you want? And then, uh, the other thing too is, again, we look at the strategic work that we've done, the work we did in the retreat. It seems to back up everything that came out of the strategic plan. There are other potential things that we want to throw into this mix. Um. You know, like housing, like these committees and, and other things. Um. At some point, we do need to address. That is a. Part of, it's gonna be a part of, I don't know if it's gonna be a part of this next year or not, but. This seems to be, this seems to be high on the priority list for, for capital projects, need to be taken care of, so. Um. It, it's going to be a difficult discussion for the community and the community should be prepared to have it. And I hope that we hear from them with very specific ideas about things that they're either comfortable letting go of or are they comfortable with what we're going to potentially be asking in order to achieve our, you know, the strategic goals of the community as set forth.
Can I ask a quick question? Regina, can you remind us, we used to have a quick little formula, like $110,000 was one penny on the tax rate. What is that number now? Is it, is it still around 110?
We were, last year, we were maybe getting a little closer to 120, but it's still somewhere between 110 and 120.
So, great. Then thinking that, about that number, we had conversations last year that were frustrating around what we've referred to as nibbling around the edges. You know, let's cut this little thing, let's cut that little thing. So when we're talking about making cuts in order to afford other things, we should not be talking about whittling $5,000 from the rec department and whittling $8,000 from the library. We need to be talking about $120,000 whittling. So I think we should set the stage, understanding that in order to move the tax rate, you have to cut something substantial or make, make substantial cuts across the board in different departments. I, I don't want us to get bogged down in that nickel and diming that does absolutely nothing. So we just, we really have to talk about large numbers if we want to make a difference in the tax rate. Yep, yep, thanks. That's helpful, because I do think, to the point about cutting services, we just whittle down those little numbers. We're still committing to do the same things, just with less resources to do it, so.
Exactly. Does anybody else have anything on this topic? Go on.
Just please, it's, it's not even FY '26 yet and here we are talking about.
Yep. Regina, you got what you need from us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so F and G are both executive sessions, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Thank you. Council member comments and city manager report, Regina?
I don't actually have anything.
That's okay, you don't have to.
Super.
Anybody?
Can I ask a question of you? Have there been changes to the traffic light or did Risa go in after 4:00 PM?
I was surprised to hear that from Risa. Those changes have not been made.
After 4:00 PM, the light changed extensions to some 30 some odd seconds. So before that, it's 17 seconds for that turn lane.
Yeah.
So it's just luck?
Just luck.
Just luck, okay, well, go buy a lottery ticket.
But I'm excited for those changes when they're coming.
Yes, and so thank you for that reminder. Yes, those changes are still in the works and coming. I'm not entirely sure when, but they will happen.
And, and, and be publicly announced.
And be publicly announced, yes.
Yes. All right, anybody else?
No.
All right. Who has the 16 motions to go into executive session? Wants to read them. Okay?
Executive session, discuss contract pursuant to 1 VSA 31382 to include the city council, city manager and Mark Prisler.
Can you get a second?
Second.
You guys can remember it's a little bit.
Everybody, it was Elaine.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right.
Council, make the specific finding that general knowledge of contracts would place the city in a substantial disadvantage. I move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss contracts pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1A to include the city manager.
Can you get a second?
Nobody, I'll second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I think, do we have one for the appointments?
I'll make a move that the enter, that the city council enter into executive session to discuss appointment of public officials pursuant to 1 VSA 313A3 to include the city manager.
Second? Thank you, all right, all in favor? Thank you, all right, we are going into executive session and we shall return hopefully soon.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we are back in open session. And I will entertain a motion.
Do you want me to do these? I'm happy to do them. Should I do them as a group or should I do them one committee at a time?
I think you can do the whole, like, list the whole slew of them in, that's in the memo. So go capital bike, yeah, that's fine.
I move that the city council appoint Nathan Duderah to the capital programs review committee. I move that the city council appoint Daniel Legori to the bike walk advisory committee. I move the city council appoint Maggie Macy and Dylan Zawicki to the development review board. I move that the city council appoint Steve Eustace as moderator. I move the city council appoint Elijah Massey and Diane Clemens for the planning commission. I also move that the city council appoint Finn Hamilton to the planning commission as a non-voting member.
Tree advisory?
Oh, sorry, yes, I have that here. I move the city council appoint Rich Boyers, Boyers, and Leslie Goldring to the tree advisory committee.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you, all right.
Yeah, I'll just add, so for Finn on the planning commission, just to clarify, Finn will be a non-voting member because he is not a qualified voter as the city charter calls for. So this is an additional seat on the planning commission. This is the sixth member of the planning commission. There, Finn will not be a part of the quorum, but it'll be great to get him all the packets and have him participate in the discussions because I'm sure the planning commission is really going to benefit from his input.
Agreed. All right, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.